Can we stand to the pledge, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand one nation, unencouraged, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start the meeting with citizens' concerns or comments. Okay, since we have none, we'll go to, um, we don't have regular session minutes this evening.
No, that's Wednesday.
Oh, it's the Wednesday?
Yeah. I think we don't do enough because they weren't posted.
Okay.
Okay. Derek, do you have anything to report?
Okay.
So then we'll start with the superintendent's report, starting with the, um, we're doing the FY 2010 budget presentations.
Great. Well, thank you, Mrs. Gibbons. Just to recap briefly, on Saturday, as you know, we began Saturday, January 10th, with a kickoff, an overview of the process to date, the steps that we have gone through, and also what we hope will happen as we move forward. Then came presentations by the central administration regarding their budget proposal from facilities and operations, from pupil services, and also from technology. This evening, we have four additional presentations that will be made by the persons in charge of those departments or schools. Before I introduce the first one, I do just want to note for you and those in the listening audience that we have posted the presentations, the PowerPoints that were presented on Saturday. They are on the website and up and available, and in fact, we've made numerous updates to the website in general, and that will continue through the rest of this week and be an ongoing process. So, without further ado, it is my pleasure to welcome Mr. William Garner, who is the athletic director, to present the budget for FY 10 for athletics.
Good evening and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you.
I'd like to start, I guess our football coach and our football captains were invited to tonight's meeting, but something came up with the coach and he was unable to pretend that he's going to be here on Wednesday. I just want to let you know that those individuals, when you meet those young men on Wednesday night, I'll tell you, it's one of the reasons why I love what I do. They're just tremendous kids, and we're really lucky to have kids like that that we get to deal with on a regular basis. So, looking forward to you meeting them, and I know they're looking forward to coming. It's been a pretty exciting year for athletics here at, for the Auburn public schools. Since our last budget presentation, our programs have accomplished quite a few amazing things. So I'd just like to start with a quick overview of some of those accomplishments. Last winter, since we met, our ice hockey team has played in the district tournament again. Softball team played in the district's final game and got beat only by a couple runs, and they're looking forward to getting back there again this year. Our baseball team captured the district championship. They also won a Central West championship, and they came up one run short from winning a state championship. And they didn't graduate too many individuals from that team, so they're looking forward to getting back to that game again. Our field hockey team won the Southern Worcester County League title and played in the district semifinals. Our girls' soccer team made another district appearance, and our boys' golf team won the Southern Worcester County League championship again. For the first time in, I'm going to say probably 15 to 20 years, we had two runners who qualified, cross-country runners, who qualified for the state tournament, Brian Quinidamo and Chloe Patterson, and went down to Boston for the state meet and represented Auburn High School very well in that meet. And both of them are young, they're both only sophomores. Our football team won the Division II League championship, and then we went on to have quite a Saturday, Super Bowl Saturday with about, I don't know, we're going to say maybe 16 to 17 hours notice that we were going to host that game. And they went on to win that game 17 to nothing and be crowned the Central West Super Bowl champions for 2008. We introduced, we had an opportunity at the beginning of the season to introduce our new mascot, Rocky, who has been a big hit. I know Dr. Brunel has had the opportunity to rub elbows with Rocky, and he's made some appearances at the elementary schools, and I'd like to just thank Kyle Beatty for his efforts this past fall in the costume. We've had continued growth in participation in the middle school athletic program. We've, this past fall, we had approximately 140 kids involved in football, field hockey, and cross-country, which is pretty impressive. There's been an increase in our strength and conditioning program that we run during the summertime, and any of the coaches will tell you that that's one of the reasons why our programs have been successful. They're spending that time preparing for the season. Our community service projects continue to provide services to people and organizations in the community, and once again, that's something that we strive to make sure that all teams accomplish that goal before the end of the season, and I think it's paid great dividends. People in the community get to see our young students in a different light than sometimes what teenagers are looked upon. The athletic department was awarded the Southern Worcester County League Sportsmanship Award, and for the second year in a row, the baseball team was awarded the Joe Gleason Sportsmanship Award. And just recently passed, with this past week, the MIA honored us on their sportsmanship honor roll for the year 2008. I think this might be a nice time also, and I don't know if Mrs. Gibbrey has made this announcement, she probably hasn't, but Mrs. Gibbrey in March at the state banquet is being honored for her distinguished service here in Auburn, and so I'd like to just publicly congratulate her for that award. I know she's looking forward to it. And probably one of the accomplishments that we're the most proud of, as far as our school and athletic department is concerned, is the academic success that our students have having, are having. And first statistic, six out of seven kids on the high honor roll list are student athletes. You know, that's pretty impressive. They're juggling jobs and academics and athletics and being successful. 26 of the 46 kids on high honors, or 57% are student athletes, and 116 of the 233 total number, or about 50% of those kids on that honor roll list, are student athletes. And that says, you know, it says a lot to me. It tells us that we're going in the right direction and we're pushing the right buttons, and that's what we're looking for, well-rounded individuals. None of these accomplishments could be taken care of without the commitment that we've had from our coaching staff, our student athletes, our parents, our teachers, and the support that we get from the community and from the administration. So I'd like to publicly thank all those involved for that. Our budget requests are pretty straightforward, and as you well know, over the past two years, we've had to make some serious cuts, and athletics has been right in the middle of taking some of those cuts. So what I'd like to do is just kind of elaborate on a few of the things that you need to keep on your radar screen for the future in order for our accomplishments to continue like they have this past year. Approximately $31,000 in coaching positions now for the second year in a row have been put on the chopping block, and with the increase in participation, the numbers that we have at the high school, we have to take another look at that next year, and we have it, we had it in for the first time the year before last. I think it was a big help. I know our middle school coaches really appreciate being paid for the time that they put in. There were eight high school positions and eight middle school positions that we had to put off till next year. The next thing is probably the number one priority, and we have to look at some kind of a full-time training, athletic training situation. Our kids and our athletes really put themselves in some physically demanding situations, and I think it's only fair that we give them the support that they need. I'll give you an example. In the last week, we've had a hockey player at practice break a leg. We had a basketball player break his nose the other night, and it just so happens that we had someone in the vicinity that was, you know, EMT trained to take care of those situations. And it happens all year long, so it's something that we really need to take a look at. The reinstatement of the line item for game management of $45,000 cut last year is now at zero. With the help of Mr. Dede, we've been able to survive running off the athletic revolving account, but I'm not sure what the account's going to look like at the end of the year, but it is currently dwindling. We have to pay all game fees, officials. We're going to be looking at paying excess transportation fees, ice time, those kinds of things out of their revolving account. So that's another area we need to take a look at. There was a request put in this year for approximately $17,000 for new uniforms. Our football team currently is wearing uniforms that are 13 years old. I think we've got our money's worth out of those. The increase in numbers, the increased size in the equipment that they're wearing, the wear and tear that they have, I don't know if somebody wants to figure it out, but I can't imagine how many times those uniforms have been laundered. It's time for a new set, and that goes along with the soccer uniforms also. We've got a girls' ice hockey program that's in its second year, and at some point, they're going to be looking for some kind of a financial commitment from the school department. And we also have an indoor track program, in-track program, that is booming from the seams. Our indoor track program right now currently has over 100 student athletes participating in it. We went from 25 to 30 three or four years ago before we moved into the new school. Now we're up over 100, and we have one coach for the boys and one coach for the girls. And, you know, we're sending that bus every Wednesday night down to Northbridge to compete, and we have two adults supervising that many students. So that's another area that we need to take a quick look at. This year's budget cycle, coaching salaries have stayed the same. All the things, if we want to write down the list, office supplies, postage, dues, travel, classroom supplies, and transportation have all stayed the same. Game management has stayed the same. Athletic reconditioning has had a slight increase, and that's just due to the fact that we have, we've got more equipment, we've got more kids and more athletes participating, which means we're going to have more stuff to take care of. Middle school officials, middle school transportation, middle school equipment is all the same. Team equipment, once again, we cut that $17,000 out for uniforms, so it's back to where it was last year. Supplies, training, first aid, athletic awards, and insurance all have remained the same. So that's where we stand athletic-wise as far as the budget is concerned. I'll entertain any questions.
Oh, there has to be questions. Any?
How do you do it? Obviously, transportation costs to you have increased, but you're not asking the town for any more.
We keep our fingers crossed that we have, you know, we have a great gate receipt. It's basically what's happening. The first game of the season this year was against Shrewsbury, and I know some of you were in attendance for that game, and we had a packed house. That goes a long ways. Next year, we happen to have Thanksgiving game again, which can be anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000, depending on, you know, the competitive nature of Oxford High School and Auburn High School, and we won't go there. It's hard. I've sat down with Mr. Dede quite a few times here, and he's put my mind at ease, and it seems like we always seem to be able to find a way somehow. And you're right, there's a lot of costs in here that get covered from the athletic revolving account. You know, transportation is one of them. Come springtime, in the past, we've dipped into the athletic revolving account to cover those expenses. Game officials, usually spring game officials, umpires and stuff, end up getting paid out of revolving account. Uniforms in the past, we've never had an increase in the equipment line item. In uniforms in the past, we've paid out of revolving. But there's only so much money you can take in at high school events. You know, some of them lose money, some of them make money, so that's where we stand.
I have a quick question. The equipment that's in the weight rooms, et cetera, that's maintained out of the money that we get from the trust fund?
Right now, we've been paying for that upkeep out of the revolving account.
So...
And it is something that we do need to take a look at because there is some more equipment that needs repair as we speak. It's getting a lot of use. A lot of it is our use.
Right, but there should be, the interest from the trust fund should be being swept in this year someplace to at least help with some of that debt. True?
My understanding through the chair is that we could certainly apportion some of that through to the trust that is for community use, but one repair that, I forget exactly what it was it had to make earlier this year, you know, Mr. Garner had said that it was used primarily or predominantly by our students, so we felt it was an expense borne by us or in large part, but yes, we can absolutely look to that.
That equipment in that exercise room, other than the cardio equipment...
Right.
The lifespan on that stuff is probably not as long as we would like to think it is. You know, we're already in our third year in that building, and it's gone by pretty fast, and, you know, that equipment gets used on a daily basis. It takes a beating.
Are we making provisions to, I mean, for the lifespan to get that replaced and that kind of thing?
I would say to you, as the way that the budget stands right now, no, there is no provision for that to be replaced in FY 10.
Well, we've got to figure out some way to replace them through either the, well, capital or the trust fund or something.
Through the capital may be an option. One of the issues, if you recall, that came up earlier this year was to ensure that items that went through the capital had a certain lifespan, so items that may have less than the seven or 10, the five years, may pose an issue. You know, we'd have to look into that, but I agree, we've got to come up with some funding source to replenish those items. And truly, you know, next year, as we move forward in the preparation of this, it was things that we knew already were going to be need to replace, so we weren't able to do any anticipation building in here at this level.
That equipment that we purchased, too, was quality equipment. It was made for, you know, it was made for abuse.
But you're right, too. You use it every single day, week, and...
Yep.
But we need to come up as a school committee, some way that this is going to be funded to be taken care of. We can't just let it go until budget time.
Correct.
We've got to, matter of fact, I think we should, within the next few months or so, probably look into it prior to the budget time, so we can come up with some kind of policy or some way to do this.
Liam?
Thank you. Just a quick comment that I'd like to make. As we're going through the budgets and the line items and everything, this is probably pretty petty, but I just wanted on the record that the mascot did not come out of school department funds. Although it was absolutely Mr. Garner's initiative, I just wanted it noted that the Booster Club and an alumni class donated the funds for that costume. So I know there were some community members that were concerned that $7,500 was used, but I just wanted to put that on the record that...
I'm glad you said that, because I thought of that when he was talking about the mascot.
Yeah, that funding came from Booster Club and the donation.
And we are looking for people who would like to wear that at games, if anybody's interested.
Do you get any businesses or anything like that that would help with uniforms and stuff like that? I know the Booster Club does a lot, but I mean, do we have any, like, businesses in town that are willing to help out with the athletics as far as uniforms and stuff like that goes?
We haven't gone that route. I know at one point, we had a business a few years ago that was, would like to get involved, but they wanted some kind of their logo put on the uniform, and the state doesn't allow any kind of advertising on their athletic uniforms, so the businesses in town are really involved. I mean, they get tapped.
They get tapped from everybody, everywhere.
Yeah, but still, it's an avenue that we could try. When we're looking for funding that, we can't give to our kids for education, and if the businesses outside can give us more money...
No, what he's saying is they're tapped by the schools. They're tapped a lot by the schools.
And Wayne, just as an aside, they, the businesses in this town are extremely supporting the Booster Club, and we hit them up quite a bit for our events, our golf tournaments and our dances and our raffles and things like that. So they're very, very helpful and very generous, and they do, through the Booster Club anyway, donate an awful lot, so...
Anybody else? Because I have a few questions. Janie?
First of all, I wanted to commend you for coming forward because it really does help when you're putting down the things that you need and aren't in the budget, because I think that's really important for us to know, and I think it's important for the community to know, because this budget didn't come easily, and everybody needs to understand that. So I appreciate the fact that you gave us a list of things that weren't funded in this budget and that we need to consider for the future and during this budget cycle. The first question that I have is, you said that we cut $31,000 in coaching positions. Are any of the coaches currently at the middle school being paid?
They are being paid by the ARC group up there.
Okay.
A $1,000 fee. Each one of them are getting a straight fee of $1,000.
Okay, so it's not through our budget?
No.
They're getting, okay.
And the eight coaches at the high school have gone back to volunteer status.
Okay. And then the revolving account, when we took out the 45, or when we took out the $45,000 and you were falling back on that revolving account, I don't know who needs to answer this, but are we looking at, if that revolving account is now dwindling down, is it even doable if we don't fund some of that $45,000? Is it even doable, or is that revolving account going to, are we going to see some revenue coming in?
Through the chair, as Mr. Garner noted earlier, we've been, he and I, very closely in monitoring the expenditures in the revolving account, and I would recommend that as we proceed through the winter into early spring, that we will continue to monitor, especially the game experiences. One item that Dr. Brunel and I have talked about is restructuring the budget, especially once we have a better sense as to where we're going with any potential cuts in local aid this year. And if need be, we'll look to offset the cuts that Mr. Garner assumed last spring with any restructuring we can in the operating budget.
And then my last question is the football uniforms. Could you give us a range of what you think one uniform costs?
They're about $200 apiece.
Okay.
Give or take, give or take $10, depending on, you know, if it was up to our football coach, it would be Penn State's uniform, so...
I hear you.
Which is not too flashy. You know, the simplest thing, the better. And that's fine, you know, we're just looking for something that isn't falling apart, that fits the kids, and, you know, something that we know we're going to get another 10 or 12 years of.
And so are you looking to get uniforms for your varsity team and then hand those 13-year-old, is that right, 13-year-old ones down to the junior varsity team?
Yes.
Okay, and the junior varsity team is pretty much in the same state?
They're wearing the things that were passed on 13 years ago, so...
I mean, we're laughing, it's really not funny. It's really, it's really not...
No, but it's a situation that every school district is in. We're not going against other schools and they're coming out, and that's not what we're about anyway. It's not about being flashy, and, you know, I think our record speaks for itself. It doesn't matter what they have on their backs, as long as their equipment is safe, they've got a good helmet, good shoulder pads, and that's our main concern. The uniforms is really...
So the helmets and those things are okay?
Yes.
All right.
Make sure I'm reading this right. So when I look at the, at the bottom of the support cost, the support costs go from, we're last year, $124,951, and this year, they're looking for $133,527. Is that what I see? If I'm reading that right?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay, I'm going to ask a stupid question. How many, how many players are there on the varsity team? Am I supposed to know that?
We had, we had 66 dressed for the football game. I'll tell you, it's pretty impressive when Auburn High School comes out for warmups and their first wave of athletes come out, and there's 30 kids, and the other team's looking, you know, wow, and then another 30 come out after that. They win the game during warmups, so it's pretty impressive.
The soccer team is kind of like that, too. Yeah, and then I had another question, I'm sorry. The indoor track, now they're held at Northbridge, right?
Right.
Do they keep all that money that's brought, that's brought in?
The gate receipts?
Yeah.
Yes.
They do.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's $1 for a student and $2 for adults to get in.
Yeah, it's not much.
It's not much.
And how...
It's a tough event, it's a tough event to go watch. At Northbridge. Just a tough place to try to watch a game. I don't, I don't mean that it's a tough, no.
Oh, I thought that was...
It's pretty exciting, actually.
Yeah, it is, it's nice. Okay, I have one other thing, and I just got off track.
No, I had a question. It really isn't a Villa or the uniforms brought it up, it's really, I think, to Dr. Brunel. We say when we don't buy the uniforms, just as we said on Saturday, when we said we won't be have to buy the textbooks, we say that that's a budget cut, but it isn't really, it's a postponement, because the need doesn't go away. Those uniforms aren't, you know, because we cut it out of this year's budget, that need is not going to go away, just as the need for textbooks aren't going to go away. Textbooks aren't going to become newbies just because we didn't buy them. Now, I, you know, would find it helpful if we somehow kept a running record so that when we do make these kind of postponements that we have to make, we can see how many years, how many budget cycles these things have waited, because it seems to me that a lot of people don't realize that these things, you know, the need doesn't go away, that the need is just as great and even greater as these things were a year old and then they are now. So if we could keep some sort of a running tally of things like that, that we postpone purchasing, would be really helpful to me.
One of the other issues that we have when it comes to uniforms, and I'm just going to use football as an example, there is an early buy incentive with a lot of companies that you deal with. If you buy them by the end of, let's say, January right now, there's a 15% discount. So if you're talking about $13,000 or $14,000, 15% is a large chunk of money. At the end of the month, it goes down to 5%, and then come April and May, there's no incentive at all. You're just looking to get your order in so it's completed in time for the season. So the way our budget cycle works, it's real difficult for us to plan on ordering something and saving any money when the budget's not finalized until, you know, May.
So you're almost looking at, anything that we would give you this year would go next to next year? Wouldn't go, you know, if you were trying to get the discount, you wouldn't be able to...
Right.
Athletic trainer, how much is an athletic trainer, you know, what's the going salary for an athletic trainer?
The athletic trainer that we lost, that we had, we had last year, went to Hudson High School, and her starting salary was $30,000.
And then that person would stay all year and do all sports?
They're there from the time school ends, first athletic event begins or practice, and they leave when the games or practices are rolling.
So, I mean, there are some sports that MIA says you have to have a trainer at, so how do we cover those without...
Right now, we've got a band-aid on it. We've got South County Physical Therapy, who's, has people assigned per diem rate through the fall season. We had our trainer leave September 19th through the fall season. The town EMTs helped us out, and it was a little snag with that, that whole thing. So we've, we've pretty much gone week to week and game by game, making sure that we've got somebody there.
But if for some reason one of the town EMTs can't come, then...
Well, if it was a football game, we'd be in trouble, or if it was an ice hockey game, we'd be in trouble. If it's a basketball game, we don't have to have anybody, legally, we don't have to have anybody there, but if you watch some of these athletic events now, these kids play hard.
Yeah, well, if it was my kid's nose that was broken, I'd pretty much want a trainer there.
So is there a fee attached to having people cover those games?
Yes.
And so...
That's where I was going.
So, you know, what is the total of that, of all those fees by the end of the year? I mean, what are we really talking about?
Well, last year, correct me if I'm wrong...
Through the chair, last year in FY 08, we paid South County about approximately $22,000, $23,000 for support to the athletic program, and that reflected game, day oversight in addition to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garner, in addition to support for the athletes outside of games with training or working on injuries and what have you.
So you're really talking another $8,000?
Last year, we would have been. This year, we've had to make some adjustments. We don't have a trainer there for assessment after school, looking at injuries, doing rehab, those kinds of things. All we're doing is covering game coverage this year.
Okay.
So when we go for football practice this year, there's no trainer at practice. There's a trainer for games.
Okay, I'm confused. Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I knew Courtney, who was the trainer that worked for South County and ended up going to Hudson. She was an extreme loss to Auburn High. Not only was she really dedicated to this, to the athletes, and the athletes loved her, but she would know an athlete's injury, and she would follow it through, and so she would be, she would know the history, she would know everything that was going on, the athlete would be comfortable with her... on, the athlete would be comfortable with her, et cetera, et cetera. Now you have these people that are flitting in and out all the time, and if you've got a prolonged injury that someone, you know, has a knee sprain or something, but, you know, soccer games, from one game to the next, the person is trying to just play through the injury. You've got different people and nobody really understands what that whole injury history is all about, so. She was wonderful, I mean, she was, she was a great loss, you know, she was very dedicated to the athletes, and it's just too bad that we weren't able to maintain her. But I think for, you know, for medical history and, and, you know, knowing the ins and outs of each of the athletes' problems and stuff, I think being consistent and everything really, you know, helps the athlete, too.
We, we've got athletes now in situations where they won't go to the trainer because they don't know her, or him. You know, they're just not comfortable having somebody that they don't know dealing with them.
Right, so Mr. Didi, when you said last year, we spent twenty-two thousand, so you're saying this year in FY oh-nine, we're, we're spending less than the twenty-two thousand because we're using, using those services less?
Correct. We, Mr. Gano has scaled back on the use of, of the resource that we have, just to work within the financial constraints.
And do those fees for those, for those people that cover, are, are they taken out of revolving account, are they taken?
Through, through the chair, a combination of what was in the operating budget and the balance through the revolving account.
Okay. And then the last thing I have to say is, it's really just a comment. I, I know that, I attended soccer games this fall, and, and parents were complaining about having to pay to get in to see even the junior varsity kids. And so I hope that anybody who's watching and, and sees this presentation understands how important those gate receipts are. And parents need to understand that it goes to a lot of things that help our athletes, so that was really my, just a comment I needed to make.
Well, we're also very lucky that, that there's not a fee attached. You know, our, our student athletes right now have an opportunity to-
Exactly.
Have us be part of their overall education, and, and they're, they're pretty lucky, because there's a lot of communities out there where that fee's exorbitant.
You're absolutely right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gano.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just had a, a question, Bill. What's the status of volleyball? I know that you've set that as a goal for next year. How does that stand?
Right now, I think we're just trying to keep what we have afloat. I mean, I've got all kinds of ideas as, and, and people in the community have all kinds of ideas as to what we would like to have. Volleyball's one, lacrosse, they're actually starting a lacrosse league in town, so it's not gonna be long before, you know, that pressure is put on us at the, at the high school level. We're talking about girls hockey and the expense that goes along with hockey, so. Right now, I think we, we've gotta take care of what we have before we start adding anything else. And you're seeing those increase in numbers in track and those things. Kids wanna participate, they wanna be part of something. And right now, I think we're able to, to hold true to that. I know it's a goal of mine, if, you know, if money wasn't an issue, we'd have a volleyball team right now.
Can I just ask one more question? I obviously understand what game management is, but what is the, where it says athletic slash record, where does that stand? Because those are the only two big, the only two increases that I see the total, well,
Reconditioning.
I'm sorry?
Through, through the chair, that is athletic reconditioning.
Of the equipment?
That is for the equipment and the uniforms, yes.
So that when somebody puts on that helmet next year?
It's been tested, put through the ropes.
It's, if I may, I just for a second, as Mr. Gano noted a, a second ago, at the end of each season, he will return the uniforms and the equipment, particularly the football equipment, and they will take a helmet and they will battle test it to ensure that the face mask is functional operation for the following year, the chin strap is, is good, and they also look at the hockey equipment and, and also uniforms to ensure that they're clean, they're presentable, that there are any rips that they repair. Rips, they, we've been very fortunate the past number of years, longer than I've been here, to, to work with a provider in Worcester, Gibneys, who has done a pretty exceptional job. To find a vendor who does reconditioning is somewhat difficult in this area, to my knowledge. There are perhaps two or three Gibneyses in central Mass, and the second one is, is further down in, in Mansfield, and the third, I'm not sure. And it's a lost eye, and it's, certainly, it's a very worthwhile investment.
It's one of the reasons those football uniforms are thirteen years old.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't, all, in our books, all it says is R E C U, I didn't know what the abbreviation stood for.
The other thing that they do is, is they store all of this equipment. You know, you've been in the high school, and we have storages, you know, is at law, so it's a great service.
If I may, through the chair, something else just kinda came to my mind when you were talking about the reconditioning and things. Do we use the collaborative, can, can you, can you use the collaborative to do some of this and, and try to get a better rate or anything like that?
Through, through the chair, we don't use French River for reconditioning. That's, I, I've broached that idea with them, and it's something that they don't do. If we were to do that, we would have to piggyback on, similar to electricity, for example, with two or three of the districts, if there was an interest. However, Mr. Gano does participate in the, the French River procurement for athletic supplies and materials. Ironically, that'll be coming up in about a month or so, with the, the bid opening in early May for a goodly number of his supplies and materials.
Right, I, I knew that, that's why I was wondering whether or not there was some of this other stuff that could kinda maybe go through the collaborative and come up with some better rates.
Some, some people might think differently, but, you know, our equipment is three miles down the road, and if, I'll give you an example, we've got a senior who wants to have the senior picture taken in their game jersey. I can pick up the phone, I make a phone call, and that shirt will actually get delivered right to my office that night. One of the things that you can't put a price tag on is the service that that particular company has provided us for, for a long, long time. It's, it's, it's one of the reasons they've been in business for sixty years, so.
Any other questions? Billy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good luck, Charlie.
Wow.
Charlie, you should open with a song, because we know you have a fabulous voice.
I don't think we grudge you that badly. Well, let me tell ya. If this were last week, because I had emailed Mr. Didi and, and said, are we presenting on, on Monday? And he emailed me back and said, no, it's been postponed, and I said, thank God, because it seems every year that I come to do a presentation, I have no voice. And last Monday, I had no voice. It's, it's coming back slowly but surely. It's that, it's that after-holiday stuff that, you know, music teaches, we just get, you get all that.
From all that celebrating.
Yeah, well, celebrating, right. My presentation will be very brief, but I do have a few things to say. First thing I wanna say is that music is an essential part of every child's education, and we look to educate the whole child. And fortunately, I've been in Auburn for, believe it or not, twenty-three years, and I'm seeing some of the fruits of our labor. Having been at the elementary level for about eight years and then coming to the, back to the high school, I'm seeing some of the children that I taught at the elementary level and some of the things that, that we did with them, and it's really wonderful to see that they remember things, they, they click, it just clicks with them. Little things that we did maybe in first grade or kindergarten, and all of a sudden they'll go, I remember that, and now they understand the, the bigger picture because of these little concepts that we taught along the way. So I just wanna say that, you know, I, I feel very privileged to have the opportunity to see that happen. Over the year, we've had many programs, holiday programs, and we still have one yet to go. It's been canceled three or four times, I've lost count now. Our middle school choral concert will be this Wednesday, I hope.
No snow in the preseason?
No, no. That program is, is a large program, there's about a hundred and seventy students in that, in the middle school choruses, so that's, I'm sure it'll be a wonderful program, as it always is. Our middle school band concert, holiday band concert was phenomenal. The high school chorus and band concerts were wonderful. I'm pleased to announce that the, the high school numbers in band and chorus are up, and actually, my chorus numbers in, at the high school level have doubled since last year. And I'm really pleased with, with that, as well as with the band. We, we lost Mr. Lazard, as you know, to Northbridge, and every time Northbridge is mentioned, I go, hmm. But we were very fortunate to get Virginia Bailey back in Auburn, and she is a phenomenal asset to the program. I wanna mention just the term teamwork. Mr. Gano and I have a great relationship between ourselves and with the students. As he was mentioning, students that are student athletes and scholars, I was thinking of some of our student musicians, who are the student athletes and the student scholars, because we share many, many, many students. And I'm really amazed, and I really find it a wonderful thing, that when I see students playing a sport and doing music, whether they're in band, or whether they're in chorus or taking guitar class, but they're doing all sorts of things, and I really think that is a great thing that I think Auburn should brag about, and we can brag about. We do give opportunities to these kids, so they can be well-rounded, and I'm, again, I'm proud to be part of that. I had one, oh, I know what I had to say. The, the last sort of little piece that I just wanted to do a little bragging about was a new endeavor that I started this year, a, an elementary chorus, grades one through four. We had our first rehearsal last Thursday, and I had over fifty-five first, second, and third graders in, and fourth graders in the high school chorus room singing their hearts out. They sound phenomenal. There is a concert, it's gonna be on March twentieth, I believe, at the high school at six-thirty. It's gonna be their first opportunity to get on that high school stage and perform. It's very exciting for me, because I really enjoy doing the gamut. I love doing the, the little kids' music, and I love doing the high school kids' music. So just wanted to put a plug in for that and see that we're, we're moving forward, and I, I thank you guys for that. As far as our budget is concerned, it's pretty much status quo. I will entertain questions, if you have any.
If I may, through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, really, Mr. Peter Trill, no questions, just comments that I've had the opportunity to, to attend some of these performances, both in the elementary and the middle and high schools, and they do a fabulous job. I think, I think the program you put together is, is amazing. I think the, your doubling of musicians in the high school definitely shows that there's more interest in the middle school where, where the student is, is, you know, looking to continue their musical thing. And I, I for one, am both, a strong opponent of both athletics and, and the fine arts. I think they're definitely a, a major portion of a, of a child's education. So I just wanna commend you and your staff. I, I think the job you do is wonderful, and I will definitely be there for that concert.
Thank you.
That will be adorable, I'm sure.
The, the music staff is, they're a wonderful group of people, and they're all very, very dedicated. And I am lucky and privileged to be working with such a fine group of people.
I would basically like to say the same thing as Leanne had said, because I've gone to quite a few, and you do a tremendous job-
Thank you.
With the budget that you have and the kids, it's unbelievable.
Thank you.
And it's great, and it's a pleasure to see the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Have to add, sometimes, you know, you go into the middle school and you've got your sixth graders, and the sixth graders playing, and, and you sit there and you say to yourself, God bless the man that's in there trying to get those instruments while I play together. You, if you don't walk out of there with a headache, you're good. And then as the year goes on, you know, you see him, and then you see the year of, the end of the concerts, and you're like, wow, it's the same group of kids, that's, that's pretty amazing.
And that growth is, is so phenomenal to see, for example, when the fifth graders pick up their instruments for the first time, and then by the time spring comes along and they're playing songs that you can recognize and, and hum along them, the sixth graders, and, and when we do the all-town band concert in, it's, I believe, it's the end of March, the beginning of April, I'm not sure of the date, off the top of my head. That's a great opportunity for those parents that have, those little fifth graders, to see where it leads, once they get to the middle school and high school, where they're actually playing real pieces of music that are, that are hard. And that, that growth is wonderful.
I do actually have one other question, if I may. I noticed that your, your repair and maintenance of instruments is staying even. I'm, I'm just curious, are you, are you in pretty good shape with, with the conditions of your instruments?
Yes.
And is that because the students are really taking good care of them?
Well, they, they, well, a couple of things. We have, with the new high school, we have a much better storage facility that is lockable, and things are not falling apart and breaking. We did get quite a few new instruments with the new high school. What we did was we sort of went through and took the best of the best and channeled them down to the middle school to see what, what they could actually use. Some of the high school instruments are too big for those kids, but some of the bigger kids could play, like the, the sousaphones or tubas and things like that. Our music parents, Fame, has, have purchased a number of instruments over the years, and that's been a great asset to us, too. So with the new high school came the new instruments. Yes, we have to keep them in good condition, but we're finding that things are staying a lot better in the facility, locked up, we keep close tabs on them, and we're not finding the repairs to be as, as costly, primarily because we have newer instruments right now. That, in future years, that will probably go up as the instruments, as Mr. Gano said, with the training equipment, the same thing, there is a lifespan. But I find the kids are really taking much better care of them.
Good, good, thank you.
You mentioned it briefly, but kudos to the parent group, the Fame group, that provides a lot of support to the program.
And I urge all the parents that have children in the music program to get involved with Fame through Claire Pacheto, she's doing a great job as president this year, and she's, she does wonderful jobs for, at, for the fifty-fifty raffle at the concerts, she really makes a lot of money, and someone usually walks away with over a hundred dollars in their pocket. But it's through them that we can do some of the things that we're able to do, for example, some of those instruments, and some of the higher-priced things that we just can't afford to, to buy.
Did everybody, no more questions? Just, this doesn't turn into a love fest or anything, but I, I do have to say that I, I think your numbers are, are doubling, because I think kids really are enjoying what they're doing. They're up there, it's not because their parents are telling them they have to, they're truly enjoying it, and that was really evident at the high school concert. When you saw those kids up there, they were jamming, it was great, it was just a really fun thing to watch.
I, I guess I have a philosophy, especially with singing, since I'm a singer, I'll, I'll use singing. I believe that everyone and anyone can sing. Some people better than others, but everyone-
You haven't heard me, obviously, if you could say that.
But see, we would give you the opportunity to sing and, and work with you until you become better. And I guess that is my philosophy and the philosophy of my whole department. So, you know, I, I guess we pride ourselves on that fact, that everybody can be a musician.
And, and you're truly instilling this love of, of music in these kids, because they, it's obvious that they're enjoying it, and so that's great.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, then thank you. See, that wasn't so bad. You could tell Mr. Gano that was not-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peter Trill.
The next presentation will be from Mrs. Ortiz for Auburn Middle School, and Mr. Giudana was here with her as well.
was here with her as well.
Oh, you should have done. Oh, Billy shut it down. Sorry, nope. You should be that one right there.
Yep, right there, John, thanks.
Then just go to slideshow.
Just minimize the side.
Up at the top, slideshow.
Just exit out.
Exit.
Thank you.
Actually, if you go to slideshow...
And if you go up...
F-five. Where you going? F-five.
At the top. The keyboard.
Very top of the keys.
No, you can't, you can't use your mouse.
There you go.
I'm going to send him to keyboarding.
Thank you.
Done.
No, no, that's okay. Click, that's all right. Click it again. He'll be all right. Yeah. No, that's the first screen. Click, click down.
Yeah, I was thinking. There you go.
Great. Click it again, John. Click, click it again. This is like the award ceremony all over again. Mr. Giudana not being able to read the names with his glasses.
Good, keep going. Thank you.
You're doing great, John. Whatever he says, you're doing great.
I just wanted everybody to be so nice. Graphics are excellent.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm fine, thank you.
I'll start off with the highlights for two thousand and eight. We're very lucky at the middle school. This past year, we were given, we were able to get through Mr. Dede twenty Dell flat-screen computers that we now use down in our Technology Two lab, which is our CAD drawing lab, computer-aided drafting lab with Mr. Dearden. Right now, we have twenty-eight stations that the kids can presently go on in one of our classrooms. We also have now eight smart boards. We're up one smart board from last year due, again, to Mr. Dede getting it for us this year. And we have the data projector mounts installed in ten of our classrooms. So that is wonderful, so the teachers can actually go on their computers and project up for the students, and it's been a great asset. We also have the after-school tutoring program that we're offering through the reading program with Mrs. Zaki and Ms. Leach. And starting in the end of January, we'll be offering the SES supplemental educational service program through Prentice Hall. We also have our math team, which is competing, and we're using Study Island and TestWiz in the building.
Pressing the wrong press down.
Going backwards.
Ortiz, you happen to have another one of these, would you? Could you give it to Derek, please?
He's got one.
Oh, do you have one? Do you have one? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, projected for next year, we're looking at reading program for all middle school students in a slash advisory. We find that this is extremely important, and we need to focus on this and allow some time each day for our reading from seventh and eighth grade also, along with our sixth grade, and have it also with an advisory session, which will mean that each teacher, each faculty member will be responsible for a certain amount of kids that we will touch base with on a day-to-day basis, along with our reading program. Also, we'll be looking at focusing on the higher-level reasoning skills, and we'll be looking at group projects, and the mastery of skills, advancing again with technology and the continuation of our service learning projects. This year, we have submitted four proposals in for the service learning projects, which I will discuss in a minute. The population at the middle school right now is somewhat down. We are presently, again, presently at a total of five hundred and eighty-two students, down from six hundred and nineteen from last year. What we find is that it runs in cycles. We come in with a big incoming sixth-grade class, it stays with us, we add to it. Our sixth-grade classes that have come in recently have been in the one ninety-nine for two consecutive years, and this year was only at one eighty-five. We feel very comfortable around the six hundred mark, but this year, it's been wonderful with a class of one hundred and eighty-five for two teams, because it's a smaller group, and we're getting a great turnout in the Quest class. So it's nice to have a small group of one eighty-five. Okay, reading teacher for grade six. It's essential that we do keep our reading teacher for grade six. We do have two at that level. I'm not sure, though, because Mr. McInerney has presently told me that he spent all my money on Saturday, so I'm just hoping that the funds are still there, because it allows us to break down those one hundred and eighty-five students into ten sections instead of the eight that we have on our other two teams. It also allows for a nice, easy transition for our middle school students within a nice, comfortable environment, and it does reduce our class sizes. This, okay, professional development, this year through Teachers Twenty-One. We're working very closely with Janice Barron of Teachers Twenty-One, and it's allowing us to do three main things. Basically, we're looking at our mission as learning for all, starting with sixth, seventh, and eighth, taking our students from where they are and bringing them forward. It allows us to look on three, at three major categories. The first one focuses on our high levels, pushing them to that proficient level and that advanced. Also, looking at our school's success. Are we being successful? What do we need to change? How do we critique ourselves as teachers and assess where we are with our students and what we're looking at, and how we're going to move them forward? The second level is our professional learning communities. And working in teams as a middle school, it's very helpful to work in small learning communities. We improve our classroom practices, we look at the best practices, we look at our teamwork, and then we start to question our skills. What are we moving forward to do at the middle school? How are we bringing them to that higher level? It's not just acceptable for us to pass the MCAS. We want to have proficient, and we want to have advanced levels. We don't want to just be mediocre. We also want to look at high student achievement. For every student that is in the advanced category, we get a hundred points for that student. That's what we're shooting for. We're not shooting for just the seventy-five. We're looking at those students that are coming into us well-rounded, advanced, and we want to move them forward, along with the rest of our population. For many years, principals, we've been criticized that we do so much for our students that are in special education or for those students that are having difficulty in school, and we don't look at those top students to move those students forward. We get so many students that come into us in kindergarten, first grade, they can already read, and by the time they come to us in the fifth grade, with fifth grade into sixth grade, then we start to, like, bring them into the same, have them work at the same level. We don't ever look at them and say, let's move that group forward. What can we do to push them a little bit forward without making them feel that they're being penalized for being that advanced student? It's like they'll say, well, we have extra work, Mrs. Ortiz, we have extra work to do, just because we move at a faster pace. We want those students to want that challenge, to want to excel, to see that goal, and want to push themselves forward. So we want to look at the whole population and move everybody forward, not just our students at the lower levels. And the last focus is, the last focus is on results. What are the results that we need, and what do these results reflect? Are we a learning group of teachers? Or are we just teachers that want to stand in front and do the same thing every day the same way? How do we want to bring that forward? We want to be able to collaborate with one another. We want to be able to say, okay, we're moving forward in the math and language arts area. What about science and social studies? How are we going to collaborate with those teachers to make that a full-team experience? And then the last one is, how are we, as middle school teachers, accountable to not only our students but to the communities that we serve? We want to be held accountable. We want to be told that when we do a good job, it's a good job for the whole community and a good job for our students. It's not just that we, as a staff, want to move forward. We want to bring everybody forward with us, including the community, and we want to be able to have a dialogue with the community often, so that we know what is expected of us as a staff. The last work in progress. We are a middle school that is working very diligently to bring our school out of corrective action. We use, right now, we presently have a math two class that we call at the middle school, and it's an additional math class that we're offering to our students. We teach ten extra math sections. I am teaching one of these math extra sections. I teach it every morning to a group of grade-six students, along with several of my colleagues. And what it does is, we are working on those skills that we find that they just haven't been able to master, that they should know by the time they come to us at the middle school, whether it is for sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade. It's a little bit of an extra push, and it's one extra period that they get per day with someone who is certified to teach the math class. Also, we're using our digital projectors to link us to the technology and the world that's beyond the classroom, to bring our students even forward and beyond what we teach in our textbooks. Also, we have the SES services, again, that will be starting on Tuesday and Thursday. That will be ninety-minute sections. No more than five students will be in each one of those sections with one of our teachers. And then we have, again, our computers that are brand-new, and our math team. Our math team is competing next week, on January nineteenth. We have a meet in our building. We're competing against basically ourselves. And then we have a national meet on February twenty-fifth. Again, it is at the middle school, but our test scores will be going out to score with other schools. And then we will be competing in April, we don't have our date yet, at St. John's, and we'll be competing. This year, we have sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students, and we have a group of about twenty-five students, and they are excited to be part of that math team. Also, we have our service learning projects, which, again, we have four proposals. The first one is in math games for our students that are in at the Brimwood School or at the Mary D. School, to help them find math to be fun and exciting. The second one is reading. It's a reading activity that Mrs. Zaki and Mrs. Leach are working on, that the activities will be used with students again, but this time not at the primary but at the intermediate level on both sides. And then our third one is through Mrs. Bazzina, who is our Green teacher, that we like to call her Mrs. Green. She is working with our students to look at cleaning Rotary Beach, which I know that's also with the town. And our last one is our grade-seven teachers, and that is called Soup Bowls, and it's S-O-U-P, where we are actually going to make soup bowls and fire them in our art room with Miss McCormick, and the students are going to invite their parents in. Tonight, actually, Mrs. Spanos is at VIA, learning how to make a wonderful soup. I hope it's escarole and bean myself, but I don't know what it will be. And we are going to make it with the students, and they're going to sell the bowls, and hopefully the profits will be something that we can look forward to. And along with the reading activity, those proceeds will go to Auburn Youth. Again, these are our four proposals. They will be meeting in January twenty-second with Mrs. Hagerty to determine which one of our proposals or which couple of our proposals, a few of them, will be accepted. So we're really excited. I'm really excited about the soup bowl for myself. Now, to look at our support costs. Any of the costs that are up there with the asterisks are at a lower figure than last year. And I just quickly wrote down up on the slide what we actually mean by when we say principal and office supplies, what that entails. And the postage is our student handbook, which is included. The dues, I belong to two organizations, and also my teachers benefit from those organizations. And the textbooks and the health, textbooks this year are just math replacement costs. No additional books will be purchased. And guidance is the Quest supplies. So it just gives you a little bit of a breakdown of what they specifically are, and the no-balance accounts that we have will be on the next slides.
Excuse me, should we wait for her to go through the whole presentation and then ask questions asked after we go along?
You can go ahead and ask if you want.
Okay. I'm curious about the printing supplies, going from twenty-eight hundred dollars to nineteen thousand dollars.
What we have done is that the printing supplies that we have up there is also a cost that we took from not only our classroom supplies, but what we had to do is fine-tune it. Years before, we would be able to put, many of our printing supplies would go under classroom supplies, because they were used in the classroom. Right now, after meeting with Mr. Dede and Dr. Brunel, what we have done is, some of the office supplies, as you can see, is a zero balance. We've moved into our printing supplies. Also, the classroom supplies is at a lower balance, because it's been also moved into our printing supplies account, because those are things that are under that category.
Through the chair, if I may, when Dr. Brunel and I met with the leadership team, one of the changes that we made this year in the development of the building budgets was to be consistent across the board. And in other buildings, the cost was there, but it was classified in a different line item. So we have reclassified those costs, and you'll see in all the building budgets, a line item for printing supplies across the board versus, say, the high school or the middle school. So that number that you see now, last year and in previous years, may have been a compilation in perhaps two or three different line items, depending upon what the expense was, be it toner, be it...
Ink cartridges.
Thank you. Drawn blank.
Ink cartridges.
Paper, whatever have you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a point? And this isn't specific to this presentation, but when I first got on the school committee, we had health textbooks that had kids with bikes on them with no helmets on. We had books that referred to computers as being a new thing. We had, you know, bio-books that hadn't been updated in years. And while I appreciate we're in tough economic times, and so we can't really go out and get, you know, a new textbook series or whatever, and I just want to caution everybody that we have to be careful, that we don't want to slip back into that, you know, we're going to keep cutting textbooks, going to keep cutting textbooks, because they're expensive. They are an expensive line item, no doubt about it. But since in a lot of cases, they're the core of what we teach out of, I appreciate that this is not the year to go out and buy, you know, an economic series, because, you know, times are so economically tight. But I just, I keep hearing that, and I just fear that we're going to slip back to where we were, so.
If I may, response through the chair. I think, I appreciate your point, Dr. Boggs, and I agree sincerely. We talked about this as a leadership team, and I made note of Mr. Prowdy's suggestion, this, whether we call it a postponement document or some document that tracks what it is we've put off for another year. And that way, and I've even made a note, if it's possible for us to look back over the past couple of years, so that at the beginning of each budget cycle, we pull that document back out and say, what did we say last year we were putting off until next year? And that needs to become the priority for us to do. So I agree, we don't want to get into a cycle where, you know, we let four or five years go by, and if it's textbooks that have already waited six or seven years, then we're looking at massive purchases. So we will ensure, and one of the jobs the Professional Development Committee will be looking at, as they create the curriculum cycle, that will also have a piece in it in looking at what curriculum materials we have. So it'll become a natural cycle over a six-year period, where we're constantly reviewing, what do we have in place for materials that go along with the curriculum that we've just updated to ensure it's in alignment with the curriculum frameworks and so forth. But all points well taken.
On the slide that I have presently up, the red highlighted titles are where we do have a lower balance. The principals, professional development, the office supplies, awards and incentives, classroom supplies, and music professional development. Several of these are now at a zero balance, as you can see by the last column. Also, after we went through and categorized and cataloged all of our textbooks, we were able to see that the math replacement costs of those books was the priority for us at the middle school this year. All of the department heads had requested, if possible, to have a set of books that the kids could have at home, and then have one classroom set that was in the middle school. Unfortunately, that is not possible this year. Some of our books are very heavy, and they were looking to alleviate the weight of the backpacks for several... backpacks for several of our students. We do have several of our textbooks that are on disk, but unfortunately, at the middle school, we don't have all our students that do have. Computers are able to use the discs nightly at home. A lot of our families have computers, but that computer might be one for the family, and the parents need that computer not to be used by just one of the students with the textbook on it at night. Also, the health costs, we've checked with the nurse to see what is actually needed. And our library supplies are at a zero balance. Just so that you're aware, our library is now being divided into two areas. One is a library on one side of section, and the other one has been converted into a teacher's room. We needed our teacher's room to be divided into two classrooms upstairs for two of our teachers to be housed. So upstairs, where our teacher's room used to be, is now two classrooms with a divider. Also, the professional development. We are working with Janice, like I said, at Barron's for this year for Teachers 21, and next year, we will see what we will be able to do for professional development. We feel that we are making great strides with her, and we're looking forward to finishing out the year with her for our professional development.
If I may, I've got a question. You have a notation in our binder that we have on the library supplies that talks about the library not being staffed in FY-10.
No.
What does that...
We used to have a library aide, Mrs. Burns, and when she left the district, her position was not replaced. We needed that position in other places in the building. So we do not have someone that works in our library at this time.
So what do you do for library coverage?
We cover it as we need to by class, as they sign up to use the library. And sometimes it's myself. It could be Mr. Giordano. It could be one of the teacher that's taking the class down. That's how we run our library.
Okay. And for yourself, for Mr. Giordano doing that, it's just an added responsibility that you guys have picked up?
Yes, along with, like I said, I'm teaching the class, and Mr. Giordano is the chair of the safety commission and council. It's just part of our day that we just go through, and we've been very lucky. It's a very rewarding time at the middle school, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. You said that your teacher's room is now two classrooms with a divider. What classes?
We have, one of our math classrooms is in there, which we used to have two of our teachers sharing a classroom, but because one of the numbers of that class has gone up to eighteen, so that is one of our classrooms. And the other classroom is one of our special ed classrooms, where we do have students that are autistic or have Asperger's, and it's not in their best interest to travel and move from class to class when classes are available.
So you have a math class and a special ed class with a divider in between?
Yes.
How does that work? How are you not disturbing, how is one class not disturbing the other?
There are three entrances into that classroom. It's a classroom with two doors where the divider goes down, and the special ed classroom can go out with, there's two special ed classrooms. In our building, we have an area with three small classrooms, which are our special ed classrooms. This additional class is on the other side of that. So they're all moving at the same time, and all of our classes do move and come in and out at the same time, so.
The divider goes right to the ceiling.
Yep, right up.
Oh, so you can, you can hear.
With a door in between.
Oh, I imagined like a curtain or something.
No, Dr. Brunel was very lucky. We were very lucky with a divider that was put up for us.
Okay.
So that's what is being used. And we are very, Mr. Hamfield very nicely gave us twenty desks, so we're ready to go and move forward. The last slide is the water sewage and the standard costs that come in through Mr. Didi and Mr. Fahy for us. And our last total support cost is $213,211, which is down $91,090 from last year.
Can we back up to the previous slide, please?
Sure.
Can you explain the remedial services in the teacher's subs going from $25,000 and $5,000 down to zero? I don't understand what October '08 TM means.
Through the chair, you'll see in each building's budget, under the support cost line item, that the last line or two lines reflects the appropriations from the fall 2008 town meeting. That there is reflective of the $25,000 that was appropriated back this past October for the middle school. You will see too, in the buildings, perhaps $5,000 for substitutes that was appropriated. And if there was any additional oil, you would see it there as well. So those last three lines are reflective of what was voted on and approved at the October 27 town meeting for the middle school. And again, as my colleagues make their presentations, you'll see, they follow the same script that you would see the last two or three lines, including those costs.
So it's not to suggest that there is no money for substitutes. They gave us additional money for substitutes.
Yes, right.
And that's why they're not in the red.
Oh, okay, I'm following that. Thank you. Yep, all right.
Questions?
So, let me answer this question. But so as I look at this, and to address, I guess, the MCAS issues that the middle school's been dealing with, we have the reading teacher at grade six.
Two.
Two. Sorry. We have the, my arm's not long enough to be, sorry. The math teacher, added, the one-to-day math teacher, right?
The additional math teacher, so that's seven of them, yes, instead of the six.
And the SES services?
Supplemental services, yes, after school.
Okay, so those are the three things that are embedded in this budget that are designed to, in part, address the MCAS issues?
Yes, we also, if I may, do you want to answer? Okay. Also, we have the study island, which Auburn Middle School has taken advantage of, and that will continue as well. But those are primarily the three big components that are in, taken care of, or addressing corrective action issues, yes.
And the additional math costs that we teach presently right now, the ten extra sections.
Questions?
Did you just say that you cut your budget down to $91,000 from last year?
It is down.
$91,000. Thank you.
What? Oh, okay, I'm asking for a five-minute break, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Ortiz, by the way.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
And our final presentation for this evening, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Hamfield, the principal of Auburn High School.
Well, thank you, Dr. Brunel, and good evening. Members of the school committee, happy 2009. I can't remember the last, I think the last time we were all together was in the presentation room of the high school last May, when we were reviewing our school improvement plan. So it's been a while since I've addressed you, but I'm happy to do so tonight. I was saying to Mrs. Zottner that I feel like the last act at a bad country bar. Ain't nobody here. Be that as it may, I hope I'm not that bad. I mean, how bad can it be?
It was best for the last.
Yeah, well, I mean, how bad can it be? I'm not asking for any more money, so we're actually going down the slope, right? So depends on how you look at it, I guess. In any event, tonight, I have four parts to this budget presentation. Number one is just to quickly gloss over how the budget ties into our strategic plan and the high school's school improvement plan. The second part is to look at our enrollment projections, next fiscal year through fiscal year twelve, talk about our instructional support and operating costs, and then summarize what that means. And I did it this year, so you can see a comparison to FY-09, in addition to what was requested originally in FY-10, and what the revised number is going forward for FY-10. So here, as we presented to you last May, on page seven of our school improvement plan, our budget is clearly tied to goal number one, which is to establish, implement, and assess, and approach the curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices that ensures that all teachers and students meet clearly defined high standards of achievement. Our second and third goals, which outline community service and responding to the wellness needs of our students, staff, and administration, we'll talk about later in May when we give you an update on our school improvement plan. Looking at 2008, 2009, or FY-09, we have acceptable class size right now at the high school due to the restoration and addition of positions over the last three years. We've completed school-wide rubrics that are being used in our classrooms that reflect 21st century skills. We've implemented professional learning communities with our staff during our school day, and we have responded to NIASK's special progress report that was to be filed by December 1st, 2008. We are awaiting a response from them, which I would anticipate would be February or March. And I suspect it will be a favorable response from them and to carry on. Things that are in progress right now at the high school, one of the overarching themes that we talked with you about last spring was that we've got to devise a schedule with longer periods of instruction that not only accounts for our academics, music, art, physical education, but also builds into advisory groups for students, gives students more of a voice in the overall operation of the building. So those are in progress currently. And then as we look ahead to fiscal year 10, we want to maintain what we've already completed. We want to obviously work out the schedule, the advisories and the governance piece this year and then next year. In addition to maintaining that, start talking about differentiated instruction and assessment, looking at our curriculum to make sure that it is including 21st century skills, make sure that we're utilizing technology appropriately, looking at assessments that are not teacher-driven, but more student performance-based, and interdisciplinary units of study, and again, continuing to respond to NIASK. Our two-year report will be upon us very shortly. In terms of our enrollment, we're looking at enrollment this year of 718 students, and these figures came from Karen Berkowitz, who got them right off of the DOE website. So they are as current as they can be. You'll see in blue, obviously, it's fiscal year nine, 718. The negative sixteen is that we were off last year in our projection by sixteen students. It can be kind of trying to shoot at a moving target because there are so many variables with student enrollment, but the last couple of years, we've been, you know, fairly close. That averages out to about four students per grade. So I think we're doing a pretty good job in our projections. As we look ahead to next year, you can see that our enrollment is projected to and jumped to 768 students, which is approximately fifty more than this current year. And the reason for that is this grade 12 class is 150 students, and that's the last time we see a class that's small for a long time. Our incoming freshman class is 201 students. To give us a total of 768, the asterisk denotes that that doesn't take into account yet our summer enrollments. Over the last three years, we've had approximately fifty has been the average, new students enrolling to Auburn High School. So we very well could be somewhere in the 780, 790, you know, figure as we go through FY-10, when school opens next year. And then you can see here in FY-11 and FY-12, it does seem to even out, and the NASDAQ projections that were done prior to the new school construction were pretty much right on target. It's bearing that out. So we, next year, we will be getting a ceiling of about that 800 number, and we expect that number to stay true for the coming years ahead. We don't imagine that going higher than 800. We hope, unless we have some massive housing developments or something, then we could have a problem. But aside from that, that's what we're looking at for enrollment. So clearly, we're growing. Mr. Page?
Question. What is the top number for enrollment in the high school now? What's the limit?
It was built for...
I hear so many different numbers.
Right. It was built, and Mr. Prowdy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was built for roughly 800 students, maybe a little bit over that, like 807 or 808, when I looked at this last year. So we're right at the, you know, at the ceiling. You know, I mean, it's tight, it's tight now. It's going to get a little bit tighter going forward. So we keep our fingers crossed that, you know, we don't have a massive influx.
So I have heard through the town that it was 860. That's not a true...
Eight hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
Well, let's put it this way, I have 808 lockers in my school building, so going just on that alone...
So you could put in 860 students?
Well, it'd be tight. We'd have to figure out what we're going to do with locker space and things of that nature. But, you know, I went around and looked at the lockers again the other day, and we have 808 lockers, which, you know, tells me that they were planning on that number of students when they were building the building, so.
Yeah, I think there was 850 was the number that was tossed around. But I think in the actual finalization of the plans, that was paid, the facilities were paid somewhat, so you probably got, you know, when they looked at, they said, we can fit 808 lockers in there.
Right.
There was nothing magic about the eight.
Right, right, right.
You know, 800 people that we can fit in there.
I have a comment. I can't recall what school district or what region recently went through this process. And I know that it's time-consuming, and there's probably a cost associated with this. But have we, over the last several years, or thought about some way to ensure that the population of students that are at Auburn High live in Auburn, they're Auburn residents? I know, I kept reading an article, and I kept following up on it. I can't remember who it was. It was like eighty, and they did sales, and it went down, and it went down. But I'm just, I'm just curious if...
There is a cost involved in that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know...
What I can say through the chair in response to that is, the school district was Quaybog Regional School District, which has students from Warren and Westbrook Field that attend. And there was some question as to whether there may be some students reported in one of those towns who might live in the other town and things. So it depended on what they were going to be, the percentage they would pay for the budget. But through your efforts earlier this school year, actually in October or so, you revised the school admissions or residency policy. And we added a statement to that, that the administration retains the right to request residency documentation at any time. And in fact, we, fairly regularly, we have one that's going on right now, that we are seeking proof of residency from them. And there's probably been at least a half dozen or so, I'm imagining, that we've questioned this year. And if the person is in fact living in Auburn, they have absolutely no problem providing the documentation. If they don't, or if there is any question about it, it puts people in a situation or a position of defensiveness and things. So any issues that are brought forward to our attention, we do pursue them. And generally, what we do is send a certified letter, return receipt, so we know that they did in fact receive it at the address we have listed for them, and then go through those channels.
Okay, thank you.
You can see here, I put up our instruction and support costs, and I kind of lumped, you know, the instructional and support personnel over there on the left-hand side. For fiscal year '09, which is the year we're currently in, we have a bottom-line number of $4,126,262. The FY-10 original request was $4,266,390, which, as you can see there, was an increase of $140,128. The pared-down number, the revised number for FY-10, is $4,174,006, or a cut, if you will, of $92,384. And in the comments section, you can see that the $47,744 that is still an increase over fiscal year '09 is contractual, that has no new positions in it. That salary, those are things that can't be helped. The fiscal year 10 revised budget includes two positions that we've cut, one new, one existing, and one position we will not fill. At the bottom of this slide here, you can see that the proposed team chair position for special education has been cut. And currently, we have a custodial position on our books that was not filled this year, and so we have not expended those dollars out on that individual. So we've been running the school year down that one custodian. And in consultation with Mr. Fahy, speaking with the superintendent, and speaking with my lead custodian at the high school, we're managing. We're managing okay to keep that building clean and presentable and in the shape that I would expect it to be in. So the proposal is to cut that team chair position, again, as proposed. Again, as proposed, to eliminate a custodial position, which Mr. Fahey may have spoken about on Saturday.
Yes.
I didn't catch that part of the presentation. And then we have a maternity leave in physical education that we will not fill in, or we're proposing not to fill, in 2009, '10.
So how are those kids going to, what's going to-
The physical, right. The physical education piece is something that we have spoken about on a few occasions when I have come to speak with you about various areas. One of the things that we've been grappling with, especially, I think, some of our upper-class students have come and spoke to the committee, could have been even, it could have been last year, was the way that our schedule is currently structured. If you take physical education four years, it's currently a four-year requirement, every other day meeting. So once you get to be a junior and a senior, you kind of get locked out of the opportunity to take an academic class. So we'd already been looking at perhaps pairing back our physical education requirement to a three-year requirement. In surveying local communities around us, very few schools have a requirement that's more than two years for physical education and health. So the budget piece, coupled with the academic piece, which had been coming up again and again in conversations with our students, but also with our parents, has led us to this decision that we will look at alternatives for that physical education requirement, which probably is going to mean that it's going to be reduced, if not to three years, or I should say, if not to two years, perhaps three years. We haven't worked out all the particulars about that yet. Again, as you're all well aware, trying to prepare a budget right now with so many unknowns, it's kind of like shooting at a moving target. So we're still looking at what scenarios are going to play out. But definitely, I think what would bear itself out would be a reduction in that requirement for graduation. The other part of this, too, is, you know, looking at our budget, what was the situation that was going to most insulate our kids, in terms of providing them their core academic subjects? If it's not a physical education teacher, and again, we're not cutting that position, we're choosing not to fill it in 2009, '10, it was going to be somebody or someone. Is it in English? Is it in social studies? Is it? And so in consultation with my department heads and speaking with Dr. Brunel, we decided this was, you know, not an ideal situation, but under the fiscal times that we have, probably the best of all alternatives to do that.
So this may be putting the cart before the horse, but, so this person is out on maternity leave, and you're saying you're not going to fill the position?
She is going out in April on maternity leave, and she has requested a full-year leave of absence-
Okay.
-for next year. The conversation has been had with all parties involved that would be affected by this decision. And I believe the requests must, it should be on your desk, I would think. Should have got here today.
Yes, yes.
Because it was received late last week.
But this is all a precursor towards going to restructuring. I know we've heard, and I vaguely remember hearing this conversation before, that some of the kids were saying they couldn't take certain academic subjects because they were locked into an every-other-day gym.
Correct.
So this is an attempt to-
Address, well-
This whole thing will be addressed.
Yeah, it's kind of a multi-pronged-
Sure.
A multi-pronged rationale as to why we went this route. One was to address those students who would prefer to take academic subjects that they currently can't take because phys ed meets every other day. The other part of this is, as we start talking about electives and what a schedule may look like in the future, that we would require our students, grades nine and 10 would be mandatory health and mandatory phys ed. In grade 11, we would, and 12, we would offer them phys ed electives. So as a student gets into their junior and senior year, they can elect to go into a physical education course if they choose to. But for those students who want to go into, you know, take an academic course instead, it gives them the flexibility to do that.
Okay.
So.
But you still have the same number of kids that have to be somewhere during that time.
Correct.
I mean, would this allow you to have those longer periods that you're learning that you're looking for?
Yes, I mean, in essence, what you're having to do is, you're having to figure out, okay, well, if they're not in phys ed now-
Where are they?
Which is every other day, where are they going?
Right.
And that would, you know, that would be those elective courses in grades 11 and 12, virtual high school as well, that many of our kids can't access because of the phys ed requirement that they're locked into. In terms of where they go, we do have our current system, we do have room in our courses in grades 11 and 12 to absorb, you know, those students who perhaps would choose not to go into physical education.
I've got a couple of questions. So I guess I was under the misunderstanding that four-year phys ed was a state mandated. That's not.
No.
That's just an Auburn High school.
Physical education, right. It was something that's been probably as old as Auburn High School, you know, 73 years or so on, a four-year requirement. The state states that physical education must be part of your curriculum, but it doesn't prescribe how many times that you need to be in physical education. You could have it once a month and satisfy the state's requirement.
Okay.
So we're not out of compliance in any way, shape, or form with the state with respect to that.
Does it also have to be a graded course? Could it be a pass/fail?
Doesn't have to be a graded course. I mean, it could be a pass/fail, you know, it could be an audit, things like that. You know, when we look at college admissions, for example, all of the colleges recalculate GPAs, you know, and so, for example, if you take a physical education class, more often times than not, it's not being recalculated into the college transcript. So sure, it could be pass/fail. Students have the opportunity to audit if they like.
And then one other question. Has there ever been any consideration or thought of if a student participates in sports-
Yes.
-that that could be considered a requirement and a fill?
That's very much on the front burner, if you will, as a discussion. One of the things, when I was, in my previous life, physical education was a big, a big part of that curriculum. And the argument against reducing your physical education requirement would be that just, you know, lifelong skills and habits and things that are being specifically honed in on and taught, that perhaps differs from the particular athletic skill that they are using in their different seasons. While that's a valid point, I would argue that we would, in grades nine and 10, be teaching those lifelong skills that students would be getting, quote-unquote, if we continue the four-year requirement. But certainly, I think, you know, many aspects of when we think about physical education, and we think about fitness, we think about, you know, proper diet, proper nutrition, we talk about exercise, you know, those are basically the components of lifelong health and wellness. Our athletes with our, as Mr. Gano said earlier, you know, we do have a very, very active, bigger, faster, stronger athletic program. So those, I mean, our kids are getting that. They are being told, you know, in season, you know, about proper nutrition and things like that. So that's very much in the front burner, to wave kids potentially out, you know, who are involved in that.
Thank you.
So, you know, we are still working out the bugs, but it's not that there isn't a viable solution down the road. I think it, from a budgetary standpoint, in conjunction with an academic standpoint and what our upperclassmen are telling us, it seems like the direction we should go.
I just have to make a comment. The way you have that up there with the figure at the very top, as people are looking at that, that's for all of your staff, everybody at the high school.
Every single person.
Just administration.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I'm not making-
I understand that, but if people are at home looking at that, and their eyes are sort of doing-
Yeah, no, no. Definitely not. So from an instructional and support standpoint, that's where we're at. You know, we made a cut of, you know, $92,384. And again, that which is left over, the $47,744, is contractual, and that's money that's really not available to touch. So now we look at our operating costs, and what I did here was, again, I put in the FY ' '09 amounts and put in the FY '10 requests, and then the FY '10 revisions, and then the comments where I felt they were needed. Our office supplies, as you can see, went up $4,000. However, our printing line is down to zero. We combined those. Do you want to jump in?
Good.
Oh, you're good, okay. You just had that look on your face like you want to say something. I don't want to skip over you.
I'm good.
Our printing supplies, FY '09, 72-802. The FY '10 request, 38-710. Again, keeping that at 38-710. Our building, it's separated by department. Wherein before, it was all kind of lumped together, so it's kind of sprinkled in throughout our different lines. Our graphics line was cut in half, as you can see there, pretty much. That's the elimination of some new software that Mr. Dooley had wanted to purchase. It doesn't adversely affect our program, it just doesn't enhance our program. But suffice it to say, we have an excellent program. So unfortunately, we are going to forego this new software at this time. Postage is up a little bit. That's due to our increased enrollment. Principals' travel for conferences, et cetera, has stayed the same. The principals' professional development, that's contractual as well. That's in, you know, it's in my contract. Our school dues, you can see there, has jumped up quite a bit. That's because our NIASC membership is a yearly, it's an annual membership. And that was something that, I think, this is the first year we've included it. Before, it was just kind of a number floating out that we always had to say, "Oh, yeah, we've got to pay that $3,000." So we've captured it this year.
If I, I will jump in for-
Sure.
-30 seconds. Through the chair, that number historically was actually in the school committee dues appropriation. So we, for next year, shifted that out of there. Thank you.
Going further down, teacher chaperones, there, from, this is my fourth year here, and from the time that I came into the Auburn Public School System, we had, there's been a line item of $2,200 that's, it's not in the teacher's contract, it's not contractual. My guess is that it was put in there by previous principal, previous administration to help get teachers to chaperone dances, because that's on a freezing Friday night like this past weekend, when we are standing at the high school at the black-and-white dance. It's not too appealing to too many of our teachers to come out and spend three or four hours with our kids. So that money had been put in there to kind of entice teachers to come and chaperone. As it stands, all of our class advisors come anyway, so there's eight, plus myself, plus my assistants. So there's always 10 people at these events. And so that number really was not, it wasn't necessary, and so we zeroed that line out. And then graduation, it's a slight increase with the graduation, but that, again, has to do with just the increased price of stuff, printing, diplomas, caps, gowns, rental of the stage, things like that. So there's a nominal increase there.
If I may interject just for a moment.
Let me go back.
This is another, and I know it's being looked at, it's just a comment I'm going to make. This is another good example as to where, you know, the more green we go and the more, you know, internet we go-
Yeah, absolutely.
...and things like that, the postage of, you know, $6,800 here, and-
Right.
...you know, the $6,000 at the middle school, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you know, so that's definitely-
Sure. I mean, as an add-on to that, I believe, I think I was watching a previous school committee meeting, and you had mentioned our principal's newsletter now is all online. We are, this year, only going to print 350 course description booklets. The rest of it's all online. So we'll have hard copies available for teachers, for you folks, for prospective students, but we're going to really try and start shifting our kids and school community to online. We did a survey a little month before Christmas, and a lot of our teachers and students are accessing AuburnRockets.com to look at that information. And it is very costly, you know, it's very, very costly. So that is something we are continuing to look at going forward. Classroom supplies, FY '09, it was 32-994. You can see it's gone up about $20,000. The foreign language lab that we have at the high school is due for some software upgrades. We have a state-of-the-art foreign language lab that uses the Rosetta Stone software. And to keep the programs running appropriately, we have to upgrade the software every four years. And so we'll be in our fourth year next year with that software. That comes with a hefty price tag. It's about $10,000 to upgrade. The projector bulbs that we utilize in our digital projector, in our digital projectors at the school, those bulbs run about 500 apiece, like this big. They're very, very expensive.
Isn't that amazing?
It is. I wish I had, I wish I had thought of it. But they're very, very expensive, and we're starting to see, you know, five to six a year start to flame out, depending on the teacher. So we need to, we need to make sure we have those, you know, in our supply closet. And then calculator replacements, every five to eight years, the mathematics department upgrades their scientific calculators. So it's, time has come due for those to be upgraded, so.
I have a question. They don't, you don't require students to buy their own calculators, or are those students that just can't?
To a certain point, to a certain point, those that are extremely expensive, that, we're talking here, are, you know, calculus computers, calculators that, you know, can easily cost $150. We can suggest to students, because it's only going to serve them well, you know, down the road to make that investment, but it's very difficult to mandate that with our kids.
I need to interject there, because the last couple of years, it, to me, it seemed like it was a mandate. And I know I spent like $120 for it.
Right, right.
And, I mean, maybe it didn't, and maybe it shouldn't have came across that way, but it-
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if that's, I mean, certainly if that's the way it came across, you know, I guess I can apologize for that. But certainly, it's not something that we make as a requirement, because certainly, that's a lot of money. And if you're someone who doesn't plan on pursuing that further than-
But they can't take those home.
Oh, no. No, no, those are, those are-
The child can take it home and work on it at home.
Art supplies, just a nominal increase. We have, Mr. Reese retired last year. We have a new outstanding art teacher at Auburn High School. A few little things that she needs that Mr. Reese didn't have available. So we have a small increase there. Staff travel for conference mileage has stayed the same. I know you've already spoken to this about textbooks. Over the last three years at the high school, we've been systematically replacing our textbooks, most notably in English, social studies, brand-new books, nine through 11. Purchased new biology books last year. We do have a need for new Algebra I books, and we do have a need for chemistry books. But that's, you know, 35, you know, or so thousand dollars. We have a bubble, you know, of students increasing. We have to also buy additional copies of texts, you know, for our increasing enrollment. Singletons can be expensive. So we cut out the purchase of Algebra I and Chemistry books this year. They will be the first thing on the docket for next year. But when we talk about a systematic replacement, you know, cycle, you know, at the high school, we've done a pretty decent job of looking at all of our textbooks and, you know, deciding what we need to replace. Last year, we did replace our Algebra II textbooks, I believe. Algebra and Chemistry, they don't change, but my counter to that is that as teaching is changing, as we're looking to align our material, our instructional materials to mass frameworks, and bringing technology and things like that, new textbook lines are very attractive and do make it easier for our kids to grasp concepts and ideas. So those books are about eight years old. They need, they're tired. We can get another year out of them, but they're tired. Launchpad, the school newspaper, that stays about the same. Our library supplies, the original request was about 15,000. We've reduced that to about 13,000. Again, that is for the maintenance of our online databases and cataloging system that we have at the high school. Those are due to be upgraded, and there's a price associated with that. Our AV supply line stayed the same. Guidance supplies are up a bit. This year, we included PSAT fees for our juniors. Currently, we were paying for our sophomores, all of our sophomores, to take PSATs, but what we were finding is some of our juniors were choosing not to take them, for whatever reason. And they need to take them. The kids need to take them. It's important, you know. And we also have Naviance, the online college search tool, helping students create their college profile. There's a cost associated with maintaining that service as well. So that went up a little bit. Safety- with maintaining that service as well. So that went up a little bit. Safety equipment is zeroed out. We needed to purchase new safety equipment for the woodshop. We do not need to purchase additional safety equipment this year. And then curriculum competitions, that primarily is made up of our mathletes. That is for transportation and registration fees for our, our math team to compete throughout Central Mass.
Mr. Hanfield, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just, just the safety equipment in the woodshop, just, can you just explain that? What, were they trying to do? And I know you say you don't need it, but-
Right. Safety equipment, previous to going to the new building, students would have to purch, well, we would purchase safety goggles for the kids. Last year, we purchased a, an infrared, kind of a, it's a cleansing system, where you take the safety goggles off, you put them in, and it sanitizes them. So they can be reused year after year after year.
Okay.
So rather than take them and have to keep buying them, and the kids walk out at the end of every year with, you know, with goggles or safety glasses, they are put into this machine, and they are, you know, sanitized and able to be recycled, I guess, for lack of a better word. And so we went with that machine last year. And it's, it's worked out very well.
Great.
It's worked out very well.
Okay, thank you.
So. Our awards, we have, you know, numerous awards that go on at the high school, whether it's graduation. A couple of years ago, we started an undergraduate awards program for our kids in grades nine through 11. So there's been a, you know, a nominal cost associated with that. Our ELE supplies has been absorbed, and Mr. McInerney, I'm sure spoke about this on Saturday, has been absorbed in the central office budget. Five-oh-four supplies, based on the last couple of years, has shown that about $500 or so should cover it. Student government, this is one that, that kind of pained me a little bit. Actually pained me a lot, because this is, you know, we tried to build a budget, you know, that would really not impact students. Every year, we had been paying for our student council to go to the state conference in Hyannis. So that would be registration fees. That would be the transportation, things like that. That's, you know, as you can see there, it's quite expensive. It's 8,200. Schools in the area fundraise that money. Speaking with the student council advisor, you know, at the high school, she felt that, you know, they could fundraise that money if they knew, you know, enough in advance. So they go every year in March. So as I said to her, we would cover it this year. But they have a year-plus to, you know, figure out a way to get there. Unfortunately, you know, it's a luxury that we just, we can't afford this year to do. Propane, we don't have any.
Excuse me, I just want to make a comment. That's really sad.
It is. It, I totally agree. It's not something that-
That's really important, important.
You know, it is important for our kids. You know, they will find a way to get there. We will help them find a way to get there. But I think, you know, I, I mean-
I know, painful.
It's just hard. It's, it's got to go somewhere.
So the opportunity is still there?
Oh, the opportunity, absolutely, is still there. Absolutely, yeah, yeah. But yes, they will, they will be able to raise it. I mean, eight thousand dollars, it's 20 kids, you know, so the registration and transportation, you know, it's like 400 bucks, you know, for them to get there. So like I said, they know ahead of time.
You know, that's a tricky one, because I think the kids are chosen, correct? So not every kid on the student council gets to go. So you're fundraising, and-
Yeah.
It, it's a tricky, it's a tricky one, and it's an important conference. And we just keep tapping our community. So you're right, Leon, it's, it's a sad.
The electrical, water, sewage, fuel and gas, custodial supplies, I believe, were touched upon on Saturday, so I won't go through those. Building repair telephone as well. Our professional development line, originally it was 18,910. Obviously up. In addition to what we're doing as a school with breaking ranks and Teachers 21, all of our teachers are involved in, you know, course or content-specific activities that, that they had asked that we attempt to fund this year. That obviously isn't feasible. So we've left enough money in the FY-10 revised number to send our teachers to advanced placement training. We can't run our AP courses if our teachers are not adequately trained, and that's required by advanced placement out of New Jersey. So we have left the necessary funds in there to, to make sure that we're maintaining our AP certification with the college testing service. And then our teacher sub-line, that's our sub-line. In addition to that, that's if we need to, for some reason, if the course section is too large, we need to split that course section into another, into another section and ask a teacher to pick up another, another, a sixth course. That number is there. And so you can see here at the bottom, fiscal year 'oh-nine, our operating costs are 661,391. We had asked for, or requested 744,248, and we have reduced it to 619 by 50. So when you look at the summary, just to summarize what I said again for the viewing public, FY-oh-nine, our instructional and support costs were 4,126,262. We had requested 4,266,390, and we had pared the net, that number back to 4,174,006. I've split this column into two sections to show, you know, what the, if there was an addition or subtraction to the FY-10 numbers, and then the comparison over FY-oh-nine. And so again, here in the instructional and support piece, you'll see that, again, we, we cut 92,384 in that positions. There is a surplus there, you know, from FY-oh-nine to FY-10. But again, it's contractual, as I've stated a few times. In our operating costs, we cut 124,733 for fiscal year 10. And compared to fiscal year 'oh-nine, it's a reduction of 41,476. And so the grand total that we reduced by for fiscal year 10, based on what we requested and what our revised numbers are, we cut at the high school 217,00117. There is obviously a surplus of 6,628 over FY-oh-nine. But again, that has to do with these numbers here in terms of contractual and what was cut. So there's a very, very slight increase in our building budget.
I have to tell you, that, that slide is really helpful. And perhaps if, if we, as we go forward and even looking back, if the other administrators could have a slide similar to that. That's, to me, does everybody agree, it really-
Yeah.
It really, it really summarizes everything very nicely. Because one of the things that is not, doesn't happen in any of these sheets is to tell you the difference of every line item, which is something we've had in the past, where you, so it's, so this kind of really doesn't help. Questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Hanfield. I know you and your staff painfully went through this, and I appreciate everything that you had to do to scale that back and come within a-
Six thousand dollars.
I don't want to call it reasonable, but, but I do appreciate your and the staff on your efforts. Farewell presented presentation. Thank you.
You know, just to, if I might make a, a comment about it in general. I think over the last three years, it was really important at the high school to restore positions that had not been filled due to retirements. And it was really important to add new positions due to the increased enrollment that we're now experiencing. I don't anticipate from, unless something out of the blue happens, I don't anticipate the high school coming forward in coming years requesting additional personnel. I think where we're at now is adequate. I think the, the trick for us is to keep it where it's at right now.
If may interject, with the exception of the team chair?
With the exception of the team chair. Yes. The operating costs, you know what? The operating costs every year, yeah. I mean, I'm going to come back on textbooks and software and, and things that teachers need to do their job in the classroom. But, you know, although the budget season has been particularly bleak, at least the bleakest it's been for me in my four years in this district, you know, I'm optimistic that, that the high school will be able to weather the storm, provided, you know, the state doesn't throw us any curveballs that they haven't already thrown us. So.
I'd just like to say you did a great job. And what you said about the thing you have up there now, it's, it's great to see it right there, you know?
Sure.
But I think you did a good job, a real good job on your presentation. I think most of the people that we've seen understand the fiscal problems that we're having, and they're really working with the town to make the budget-
Sure.
...the best they can for the children that you can at this time. And I want to thank you for that.
And I'd like to say that, too. So far, and I'm sure that the, the old grades will be just, just as, as well-presented. But I really have to give kudos to Dr. Brunel. This is really the best budget presentation that I've seen in a long time. And I really appreciate that the administrators are collectively holding their breath and doing their part to help the, the community weather this horrible economic storm. And hopefully, we'll all get through it.
I think my, just my closing comment is, is as long as, is it's very clear to the community that, that, you know, from, you know, the high school, the middle school, and I'm sure what's coming, you know, all-inclusive, it can't get any lower than that, because then we really start running into problems. You know, we, we have, I think, you know, to bring a budget, I don't know the last time the town has seen a budget that's, you know-
Basically level.
Less than, you know, it's below, you know, the previous number. And that's not something that we should be saying, yeah, that's great. But this is about as low as we can go without really drastically affecting at least, you know, services, you know, in schools.
I think that that's, has been my concern, as I set through the last two days of this, is that the presentations, I, I can only imagine how difficult this was to bring this budget forward. And it almost sounds like it was much easier than it was. And I, so I, I'm glad that you made that comment, because I don't want the community to think that this was an easy, an easy budget to come to.
Oh, no, not, no, not at all.
This was, this is not moving us forward in a lot of ways.
Right. Right. This, this is, this is one of these deals where you, you won't necessarily feel it. If, if progress isn't made in the, in the next few years, you won't feel it next year. You may not even feel it in two years. But as we get on, into years three, four, and five from now, into fiscal years 11, 12, and 13, that's when you'll start to feel what we didn't do-
That's right.
FY-10, 11, 12. And people need to keep that, you know, in the forefront of their mind. And, and that's irrespective of, of our economic situation. People just have to be realistic that we can only do what we, you know, with what we have. And, and we're trying to do the best we can, you know, given the circumstances. You know, and I think we're all, you know, collectively done that. And I hope the townspeople understand that.
Because I, the, the thing that concerns me the very most, and I, I am, I'm well aware of the situation that's going on, and I, I understand why we have to go through this exercise. But I have a, I have a concern, and, and you as the high school principal can tell me if I'm wrong, but as you read the newspaper and you realize that many of the kids that probably were, were going to be trying to get spots at, you know, some of the schools that are not state schools, they're now going to be applying to state schools-
Right.
-because they just can't afford the tuition.
Right, right.
Our students, a lot of our students do go to state schools, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
So those spots are now, they're going to be much more competitive.
Absolutely.
And so we have to make sure that our students are up there, because they're going to, they're going to be competing with a lot more students for those slots, and-
You know, I think at the high school, you know, one of the, you know, I mean, it's, I don't know, it seems like four years for me has just gone by in the blink of an eye to say that. It's been my fourth year here. But, you know, four years ago, you know, I think one of the overarching goals that, that I had, and the faculty had, too, was that, you know, at least at the high school level, we create, or we would create, an environment where our kids could be just as competitive as, you know, students from, from other, from other towns. You know, we're four years in, and you've got a memo about Mimi Tran, who accepted to MIT. We've got kids who are, you know, waiting, you know, for Yale and Harvard, you know. Those are things that kids weren't doing four years ago when I got there. I came and told you in November of 'oh-five, you know, why, why is that? You know, we are providing an environment that if the child, and the parent, and the teachers work, they will be competitive. And, and I guess that's the standpoint from which I speak to you tonight, that, you know, at the high school, that's where we are right now. So if we can maintain our staffing, you know, and continue to be mindful of, of, you know, those things that our teachers need in the classroom to be, you know, able to do their jobs to the best of their ability every day, I, we will be competitive. No question about it.
When my statement's saying that a lot of our kids go to state schools, I probably, I mean, this is a whole different discussion, but I probably would have to assume that that's more of an economic situation.
Sure. Oh, absolutely.
That the state schools are just more affordable.
Yeah. I mean, it's been very well, you know, documented on the news that, that, you know, state schools, you know, are becoming much more selective in, in who they're admitting. Because you're right, the, the times are just, you know, private, private education, you know, post-secondary is just outpacing, you know, what people can afford.
I can tell you, I get email at work with state, state school enrollments. Early action at Amherst was up 29 percent. Westfield was up 50 percent. Mass College of Liberal Arts was up 40 to 50 percent. And New Mass Lowell was up, I want to say 28 percent.
Wayne, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Did you-
No, I'm all set now.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I always do.
I have one question. Your initiative with breaking ranks, because you're making these cuts, are you feeling like you're going to be able to move forward and, and do what needs to be done? Professional development and-
Absolutely. I, and I don't want to open up a can of worms tonight. It's not really opening up a can of worms. But with respect to where we are in that process, I would, we will obviously be coming to you probably in May of this year to, to talk to you about the progress we've made in year one of breaking ranks. In the system-wide professional development line, I believe Dr. Brunel has included money to, to retain Teachers 21-
Mm-hmm.
-who has been working very intimately with us as we walk through the breaking ranks process. You know, as, as we spoke to you last May about the different aspects of the building that we needed to, to work on, you know, the overarching piece was going to longer periods of instruction. You know, the faculty has come to a consensus, you know, through the study, you know, of various schedules, that the trimester schedule is something that they want to go to. And I know there are questions there with respect to, how does that affect college admissions, you know, and, and a whole bevy of other issues. Back in December, when, when I was asked by Dr. Brunel to, to, to contribute to the Auburn News, you know, I was out maybe ahead of myself just a little bit, because with the weather that we've had, we've had to cancel, you know, quite a few of our sessions with Teachers 21. That was going to help us guide us through that, that scheduling process. We're set back a little bit right now with respect to getting our schedules, you know, what our mock schedules will look like in that process. And so, you know, as we continue to look at that, I, I think it would probably make a lot of sense for us to come in May to talk to you about that. But I guess the short answer to your question is no. It's not going to have an impact on, on our ability to, to move forward with those initiatives. And that was one of the things that, you know, last year, I can remember Dr. Bill hammering that home in our breaking ranks courses. It won't cost any more money. It won't cost any more money. And really, the only thing that it cost was retaining a consulting agency, you know, $30,000. That's really what the cost has been. Everything else that we're doing, it's a reallocation of our current assets. It's a reallocation of what we have. It's taking what we currently have and, and, and moving it in a better direction, and thinking outside the box, and, you know, realizing that, you know, there isn't, we can't have a $25 million school budget. It's not going to happen. And so, and so we're, we're moving full steam ahead with that. And I think in May would probably be the appropriate time to come in and talk about, you know, the progress we've made and where we're going next year.
And I was excited from the time you came forward. I, I saw the excitement in your teachers, and I'm assuming it's-
That excitement still exists. It still exists.
I can't say enough good things about-
We're, we're, they're working hard. They're, I, I can- Where, they're working hard, they're, I cannot, I cannot say enough about the faculty at Auburn High School, they are working their tails off, and we will, we will see it to fruition.
Any questions?
I, you know, I truly appreciate what you have done and what others of the administrative team has done, and I know that you have paid wherever you could, and now we are at a figure that we can live with, and we know that it doesn't give us the initiatives, all the initiatives that we would hope we would get out of the strategic plan, but it gives us enough to be a successful school system, but I still am afraid because we don't know what will happen to this budget, this is now becoming our budget, but if the town says or the state says, cut another 10 percent, or cut five more teachers, or whatever they might say, we have reached a point where that will, I would guess, cause considerable harm.
Sure, right, I mean, I don't think we should understate the fact that we're kind of right at the precipice of catastrophe, I mean, if we can stay right where we are, and I'm speaking, you know, this is just me speaking, this is just me riffing now K-12, if we can stay where we are, you know, with the number we have, we're going to be okay, but we are, you're right, we are one memo from the state, you know, from catastrophe, as are other communities, you know, around us, it's not just us, you know, but it's kind of where we're at.
To Dr. Boggs's point about, I appreciate your kudos greatly, and want to in turn extend them to all members of the leadership team, because what we really did as a team was discuss and decide, how do we go forward in presenting this budget, and I think it's critically important, if the point has not yet been driven home as emphatically as it should have been, to make the point again that this is not a budget of things that we wish for, this is what we need in order to keep, keep us moving, and when you build up momentum, as the Auburn Public Schools has, fortunately, you know, we will, we will be able to survive next year with this budget that is a decrease of $1,850 from FY '09. We sat and said, it is the staff that we have, those provide direct services to students that we have at, at all costs, we've got to preserve those in our budget, so rather than bring forward a budget that was the 5.6 percent recommendation, it's our recommendation to go forward with the one that's the $1,850 less, and that is a result of numerous meetings and numerous discussions where we've said, do we start with the 5.6 and then, you know, I think there was a risk in putting out a budget to that degree because it would say, were we as a school department, as an educational entity, were we really cognizant of the economic times in which we're currently facing? So we made the decision, let's go forward with the tightest budget that we can prepare. Now granted, depending on what comes out from the State Department, that, that may bring all departments back to review their budget, but at this point, it is our recommendation and our very strong belief that this budget is one we can live with next year, but additional cuts will be painful, and we will not be able to insulate students beyond the way that we have been able to today, and that was really our goal, but beyond this point, you know, it's going to be cutting deep into programs, without question.
I guess one of my, the reasons I appreciate this is because I hope it signals to the community that we're trying to act as part of the town, and that we're trying to be team players, and we realize that the town is in economic straits, and so we're trying to contain our budget to reflect that.
Right, exactly.
I'd just like to say basically the same that Janie had just said, but as you remember last year at this time, we were looking at a budget that the school committee, well, the school committee had agreed to, which I probably won't, it didn't agree to it fully. As last year, we were talking about a budget, we were talking about a $23 million budget plus. This year, you're talking about a $20 million, which is a cut, a big cut from last year, which I didn't agree and it didn't go through, but the thing is, I think this is the first time that I came since I've been here or prior to me coming here, that I've seen a team work with the superintendent so hard with the fiscal problems that we're having, and to look at the town as a whole for a change, and really put their best forward for the whole town, and I just wanted to say that.
Any else?
Okay, well, I'm the last act in the country bar tonight.
Can you give us a song?
Thank you, Mr. Brunel. Just hit it twice a little, thank you, thank you.
What I, what I am going to ask people to do is, if you could look over things, this is a lot to digest, I thought so anyway, tonight, if you, if you look over this tomorrow and you feel like there are questions that you have that you didn't, couldn't think of this evening, if you would please email Dr. Brunel tomorrow, and then she can talk to anybody who's presented this evening or on Saturday, and then we can have those questions dealt with on Wednesday night. Does that make sense?
No, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, I'll talk slower.
No, no, what you said made sense.
Yeah.
You know what, there's no way I'm going to be able to, like, go through this by the time we get home tonight or tomorrow night.
The problem is, is that we, our last meeting on this budget is Wednesday, so if you have-
So that means we can't, we can't, like, bring up questions on the following meeting?
I think we're going to present this budget to the, are we presenting it to the finance committee or the town administrator?
What I had noted in the superintendent's memo on Saturday, by town charter, by the second Monday in May, there is the expectation that a draft budget would go forward to the executive secretary or town administrator and county accountant, that would, that would be today, January 12th, so we are working as expeditiously as possible, and I know that on the town side they have delays as well, the ice storm sent everybody back, priorities shifted in that. I had made a recommendation in the superintendent's memo that rather than rush, not rush, but rather than move quickly to hold a public hearing right after this, that after, after Wednesday evening's meeting, and it may be that you have additional questions and we need to either stay longer on Wednesday or schedule another meeting for next week, problematic is Monday with Martin Luther King Day being a holiday, but we could certainly choose another day next week to answer any questions that you have, and that rather than hold the public hearing and then send the number forward to Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Kasanovich, would be for you as a school committee to vote this as a draft proposal, to go forward to them, and there's nothing in the charter that says this has to be the public hearing voted document, voted number by the school committee, because there are so many unknowns out there, we don't know what Governor Patrick is going to do with the FY '09, is he going to make decreases in that, we don't know yet, you know, how soon after President-elect Obama is in office, that federal stimulus package, and what impact that might have on state economy and towns, so might that have a positive impact, if there's enough money that's generated out there in jobs that the state might be anticipating a 5% or 10% cut in local aid next year, maybe it won't be to that same degree, so that we send forward a budget, clearly market draft with a cover letter that explains the process that we have gone through, and that we will then come back and hold a public hearing so that we can give the town meeting members, so we can give the finance and board of selectmen an opportunity to come and ask questions about each and every specific line and they may, they may have questions about, but to hold off on that public hearing, and the reason being, and this is the optimist in me, once you vote a number at public hearing, you cannot increase it, you can always decrease it, but you cannot increase it, so while the town right now, and I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Kasanovich specifically about this, the town is building their budget off of a projected 10% decrease in Chapter 70, that's a number that, it could very well be a very realistic number, but right now it is a complete unknown, it's an unknown to all of us, what are they actually going to cut? So until we know what that cut's going to look like, and truly, working as a member of this entire town, but make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation that what if we don't, the state does not send down a 10% budget cut, that $1.5 million deficit that the town is projecting evaporates, I think the 10% reduction is probably a very fair estimate right now, I think it's a very fair estimate based on everything I read, but there is nothing to say that you've got to rush to hold a public hearing before you send this document to Mr. O'Connor, you can send it to him as, as it stands, assuming the school committee decides which budget is that you're going forward with. Leadership team recommends the one that is $1,850 less than FY 2009, that's what we're recommending, but you could certainly take a vote of what number you want to send to the town without holding a public hearing on that number yet.
My only concern was is that, I mean, I'll be more than happy to read it tomorrow night, but then if I've got questions, I got to email it to them either tomorrow evening, late tomorrow evening, or first thing Wednesday morning, and then that only gives them a few hours, a window of opportunity there to get the answers to bring to the meeting Wednesday night, that's why I'm just not so sure, timing-wise, if it's feasible to be done.
Wayne?
I just have a problem voting on it before the public hearing, I just-
No, what I'm saying is, you wouldn't be voting on the final number, until you hold the public hearing, you can't have a final number, I'm saying just a number, so to try and comply with the town charter that says by today, we should have our number into the town administrator, that we would at least send a budget forward, as the other departments have, I anticipate the other departments may very well have to make adjustments in their budget as well, but once we vote the public hearing number, we have no flexibility to increase that number, so that's all that I'm saying.
We will have a public hearing, and at that point, we can adjust it at that point.
Yes, exactly.
As long as there's room that we can adjust it, either if we have, if we can adjust it high or if we have to adjust it lower.
Exactly, see, that's my point, is if we were to hold a public hearing, you know, say you agreed on Wednesday, let's go with a budget that's $20,587,542, we hold a public hearing and you vote that, we cannot, you cannot as a school committee increase that number.
Right, increase or decrease.
So, right, you can actually, you can always decrease, you just can't go up, but if we send this forward, so that way Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Kasanovich have this information, they have our number that we're putting in our request for, and then wait and see what comes out from the State Department, and then I would suggest we have our school committee meeting on February 2nd, decide that night, when do you want to hold your public hearing, and advertise it, and do that advertising, and get the mailing out to the town meeting members, so everyone's well informed and everyone can come and take that opportunity to review through the line items.
I think we just need to be sure as to what language we need to use when we make the motion to send this forward. Do we send it forward as a draft, do we send it, because you're right, because you don't want to send it forward as your final number.
Right.
So if you could make sure that you put together a-
Sure.
Correct wording.
Yeah.
If you can get it first for Wednesday night, maybe?
I can do that, yes.
We'd have to do it for Wednesday night because he's going to be sending it, so-
Exactly, but we want to make sure we can go either way with the budgets.
So the bottom line is we're sending forward to the town a draft?
Right.
Right, exactly.
That's what we want to make sure we word-
A draft proposal, yes.
We want the churchy words to write.
The appropriate language that doesn't give us any problems.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you know, I would just ask that if you, if you feel like you have some questions, get them to Dr. Brunel so we can have them answered on Wednesday night, and we'll move forward from there if you're able to, and that's from all of us, Derek, you are more than welcome to, you know, ask any questions that you want, in fact, I think it would give us a lot of insight here, some of the things that you're thinking about as we're going through this, because your perspective is much different than ours.
So in between your homework.
No, I'm just saying, if you're, as you're-
No, good, if you get anything.
Yeah.
Anything?
And before we, before we go into executive session, I just want to commend the staff here at Central Office, they did a wonderful job, if you noticed as you were walking in here this evening, how wonderful the lobby looks, they've really worked very, very hard to make that a pleasant and professional atmosphere, and so I think we need to make sure that we recognize their efforts.
Actually, staff from all the schools, this and here was done by, no, staff from all the schools have done, Friday was a beehive of activity.
Four principals.
Exactly, setting things up in the hallways as well, and then the longhouse for Mr. Marky's class, grade three, but this was done by Central Office staff, yeah.
I think the atmosphere when people walk into our central office, it's an important, it's important, so we do appreciate that. I just need a motion to go into executive session.
Actually, the chair, we do, well, no, we do have one thing under the superintendent's-
I'm sorry, I apologize.
And then I do have a question under the unfinished business.
Okay.
That I just have a question on.
Mrs. Chase received, or, on behalf of Mary D. Stone School, Mrs. Chase received a donation of $250 from the Auburn Rotary, and she included a memo in here, and it's my recommendation that we accept that donation with gratitude from the Auburn Rotary to the Mary D. Stone School.
So, I'll read that, one second.
Okay, any comments, questions, and we're going to send them a-
We absolutely will send them a note of thanks, yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And under, under, just a minute, Leanne, under unfinished business, we did have the superintendent's goals, did we not talk on Saturday that if we had questions, we would address those this evening, does anybody-
That's my question, I guess, I didn't understand what the direction was, I, I didn't understand whether we were supposed to go and do our own evaluation of the superintendent or what the intent was at this time.
No, that will happen later, if you look on the timeline, that happens later. Dr. Brunel, should we, should we have a time where we have a discussion on all those points, or do you-
That really is, that's up to you, I would be happy to, there's no, what was on the timeline was the requirement that I submit to you or conduct a self-analysis of where I stand with the goals, so, and I have reported that to you, so I think that at any point, if you have questions about it or comments, if you want to make them, it can be tonight, if you'd like, I can add it to as unfinished business, business on the next several agendas, and if people want to bring it up, it will be there, it's something they can discuss, it's really up to you.
I would like that request to keep it as an open item under unfinished business for the next couple meetings.
Okay, and do we want to, okay, we'll do it that way, all right.
Great, thank you.
No, that's something else, I'll think on this for a while.
March 2nd is going to be here very soon.
I know.
It's going to come very quickly, and that's when, according to this timeline, Mrs. Gribbins will distribute the evaluation forms to each of you.
Okay.
And that will be the time when you need to do-
Your stuff.
Your stuff, and I'll need to update my self-evaluation again by March 16th.
Okay. Okay, now I do need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing, I apologize, I just wanted to commend Dr. Brunel and her staff going through the projects that you put forward in response to Mr. O'Connor's request about if this stimulus package happens to come into place, I think the projects that you put forward were extremely aggressive and very appropriate, and I want to thank you on behalf of the school department, and I'm not sure, I know that this is just a request, but I'm not sure whether or not it might be appropriate just to throw them up on the website, just so people can see that these are some of the projects that we were thinking about and hoping that we could get funded, I thought some of them were, like, tremendous and really would move us forward, so.
That's great, and to that point, through no fault of anyone in Town Hall, the turnaround time was very, very short, that came out of the Lieutenant Governor's office who's heading this charge on the state level, and I know the town likewise submitted a number of, or they put it together as a package, and my understanding is Auburn put in about $120 million or so in requests, but I commend, Mr. Fahey did tremendous work in getting things turned around, Mrs. Turcot assisted as well, Mr. Bouvier was instrumental, Mr. Deedy as well as Mrs. Zottner, so it was really a team effort in getting everything put together, but thank you, I appreciate the recognition on behalf of them.
Okay, now I need a motion to enter into executive session under MGL, Chapter 39, I'm going to recognize you, Section 23B3, for the purpose of continuing discussions of strategies with respect to collective bargaining with union and non-union personnel. The committee will reconvene in open session to adjourn.
She won't recognize me.
So, you can- You can second.
I'll second.
You're the only one that can.
I'll second.
Okay.
Roll call. Mrs. Gibbry?
Yes.
Dr. Boggs?
Now, do you have to, do you-
You have to poll us.
Yes, we're polling first.
We're polling all of you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Proudy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gibbons?
Yes.
And just for the, Mr. Proudy and Mr. Page will need to excuse themselves because it's regarding contracts and being in conflict. Be the attend, I'm sorry.
I can't throw him a plump.